I'm sure you're To begin with, we the Greater Shepparton City Council begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two, our privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. It's also important to note that there is no discussion tonight in regard to the councillor meeting. I note we have no apologies. Item number three, no apologies with our councillors tonight. Do we have any declarations of conflict of interest councillors tonight? No. I now go to the confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting. Is any item of the minutes opposed? No. Would a councillor please like to move that recommendation?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor, but I'd like to also have it noted regarding councillor Ryan, a former councillor here receiving the Order of Australia Medal. I'd like that mentioned in the upcoming minutes, please.
Yes, that's a great acknowledgement of councillor Ryan. Will we have a second to please, to move that, councillor Jovanetti? Would you like to, sorry, just mention what the recommendation is there?
Recommendation that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 15th of May, and a special council meeting held on the 15th of May 2018 and the 5th of June, as circulated, be confirmed.
Thank you very much. You don't wish to speak to that recommendation? Councillor Jovanetti?
Aye, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll all go to the vote. Carried. Councillors, we now go to item 7.1 on page two. The recommendation is also on page two. Item 7.1 is the proposed sale of 17 Wanganui Road, Shepparton. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed on page two of the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Someone like to second that, please?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to that motion?
It's an administrative process. It's an item of land set aside for drainage purposes, not accessible by road. It's been deemed that it's too small to be used for retardation basin, and we don't have any alternative use. We've had an approach from the abutting landowner to purchase. So this merely sets the process in train. We authorise the chief executive officer to undertake the administrative procedures to carry out the functions under section 223 of the Act, and if we receive any submissions, to then consider those submissions before reaching a decision.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazelman. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, sir, what councillor Hazelman said entirely.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Hazelman? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 7.2 on page five. The recommendation is also on page five. 7.2 is the contract 1838 Electric Line Clearance Tree Pruning. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Would I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In moving the recommendation, it's on page five. This is for a three-year contract for electrical line clearance. It's a contract that comes up every three years, and we've awarded this contract to Active Tree Services at a price estimate of $504,180 over a three-year period.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, you realise how council can spend a lot of money on a lot of things you don't think of. It's very important that the trees are kept off the power lines. You wouldn't be thinking of spending half a million dollars over a three-year period doing it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Jovanetti?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 8.1, Appointing Members for Greater Shepparton Disability Advisory Committee on page nine. The recommendation is also on page nine. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to move the motion. Other recommendation on page nine is a motion, that being that having considered nominations received for appointment to the Disability Advisory Committee, appoint the following members for a three-year term commencing on the 20th of June 2018 and expiring on the 20th of June 2021. The names are listed there.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sumner? Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
As councillor's representative on this Disability Advisory Committee, it's great to see that we have a number of new people joining the committee. I think Barry Cruz is pretty much only the existing member that's still remaining, but I would like council to write to the other members of the Disability Advisory Committee, thanking them for their service over the past number of years.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Sumner, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Jovanetti?
Only Madam Mayor, that I've been on this committee for two years now, and the committee itself do an excellent job highlighting the issues of people with disabilities within the community and how council can help and support them through this process of the Disability Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 8.2, Appointing Members for the Greater Shepparton Positive Aging Advisory Committee on page 14. The recommendation is also on page 14. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor O'Savary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation on page 14, items one and two.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, the motion and its content is pretty straightforward. There's been a couple of vacancies that have arisen in relation to a couple of the committee members resigning, so in order to fulfil the requirements of that committee, there have been two further nominations in the form of Simon White and Rosita Young, who are both community members. I congratulate them on their nomination, and I also congratulate and thank Annie Nichols and David Baker for their assistance.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Councillor O'Savary covered it very well. Thank you.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Some quick comments. That this committee reflects the adherence to the principles of inclusiveness in the matters related to Greater Shepparton council and also the community. It demonstrates that the positive ageing through active participation in community and council decisions is very significant to the wellbeing of overall community. I'm particularly pleased to see Rosita taking on a very active role, having seen her becoming a member of Women's Advisory Committee and then moving on to Community Leadership Programme and now to the Positive Aging Committee. So well done for putting up your hands for this committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor O'Savary?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 8.3 on page 19. We actually have a recommendation on the screen due to a couple of slight changes within the agenda. The item 8.3 is Management of the Ballantyne Centre. Would a councillor, sorry, Mr Harriet, would you like to explain that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Slight change to the recommendation in that as printed recommendations four, five, six, seven and eight need to be subject to the non-receival of submissions, and that's the only change, and that's described in the altered recommendation on the screen.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to move the motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the motion that's currently up on the screen to transfer the responsibility of the Ballantyne Centre from the section 86 committee over to the Taturra Football Club.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think this is a logical step, Madam Mayor. Ex-councillor Brian has briefed me considerably at the local Taturra versus Shepparton United football game a few weeks ago, and I think it makes good logical sense that the Tatfooty Club take over the responsibility for this centre, as they are basically doing it now anyway. So all we're doing is ratifying what pretty much is an existing arrangement.
Thank you very much, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, I'd like to thank very much Graham Donaldson, Daryl Eaton, Sue Morton, Graeme Plitham and Barbara Twyke for their help and support for the Ballantyne Centre over the years, and I also think that Graham Donaldson, Daryl Eaton, Sue Morton, Graeme Plitham and Barbara Twyke will be a member subcommittee for the Taturra Football Club that oversees the Taturra Park ground.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patterson, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? To the motion? Councillor Adam?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to add that it's a Taturra Football netball club.
Yes, thank you very much for that clarification there. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Jovanetti?
No, Madam Mayor. In fact, I apologise to councillor Adam that I missed the netball side of the club.
I'll wait for your letter of apology, councillor.
Thank you very much for that. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 8.4 on page 24. Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. The recommendation is also on page 24. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Abdullah? Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sumner? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would like to move the recommendation on page 24 as a motion, which states that the council endorsed the amended terms of reference for the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee. It is a very active and evolving advisory committee, having been a member of this committee for the past three years. The committee regularly reviews its terms of reference so that these remain relevant and they are adapted to the changing needs of the community and the committee. One of the main feedbacks over the years has been that the name was considered too long and too confusing, hence the committee is recommending a change to the name and rename it to Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Advisory Committee, which is simple to remember. One of the major changes are all listed here on page 25, the changes to the terms of reference. One of the important updates has been about the chair and deputy chair's tenure, which has been changed from two months to six months, and this decision was made so as to give the committee members an opportunity to develop in this role and to get the skills that are needed to perform this role. So I'm happy with the terms of reference. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? Oh, sorry, councillor Sumner, have my yeses right? Councillor Sumner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Abdullah?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
We'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 8.5, Draft 2018-2021 Universe Access and Inclusion Plan on page 27. The recommendation is also on page 27. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Sumner, what would you like to move?
I'll move the recommendation as listed on page 27.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor O'Savary? Councillor Sumner, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. It's our universal access and inclusion plan, as it says. It's a statutory obligation under the Disability Discrimination Act to have one, but we treat it as much more than that. It drives very real improvements across the whole community. Some examples of what they've achieved is Auslan at Carol's by Candlelight, construction of three adult change tables, 18 accessible parking bays. They've developed an accessible carriage for the Kidstown Miniature Railway. They lobby for better transport options and input into broader community infrastructure projects, and that's just some. So all of this comes in the plan, and it helps the whole community, not just the disabled community, because you never know when you may be in need. We have an aging population. Bureau of Statistics says that 20.7% of Greater Shepparton residents are over 65, and we also have the advantage of living on a very flat land, so there's potential to be known as an accessible city. We can cater for the vulnerable people of our community and also attract more older tourists who statistically have more disposable income, and that flows over into our economy. So hopefully the community can offer some suggestions over the next three weeks. Just head to our website and it can be done electronically.
Thank you very much, councillor Sumner. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Sumner?
No.
We'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 9.1, May 2018 Monthly Financial Report on page 31. The recommendation is also on page 31. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor O'Savary?
I'll move the recommendation on page 31, that the council receive a note, the May 2008 Monthly Financial Report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'd invite Mr Titezal to speak to it if he's able.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and through you to the councillors. The monthly financial report and the detail of which is attached to your agenda, in terms of how we're tracking at the moment as we draw to year end, it's pretty much as expected, in fact slightly better than expected, is where we're projecting to end up. Liquidity ratio, the working capital ratio, is forecast to end the year at 233%, which is extremely low risk in accordance with the VAGO risk levels. This is predominantly due to a couple of factors, one being cash, particularly because the cash is high. We're projecting that, well, we know that we will receive 50% of next year's financial assistance grant from the federal government before year end, so they've elected to pay that early, and that will increase our cash projections. The other thing that's impacting that is our capital programme is projected to be underspent compared to our regional budget projections, and that's underspent by about $7 million. Those projects that won't be completed by year end will transfer into the 18, 19 year. In terms of the operating statement, how we're tracking there, as I said, income will be up due to the $6.7 million of advanced grant payments. Expenditure is also projected to be under budget in total, but there is an unfavourable variance there in relation to depreciation and amortisation, and that's reflective of revaluation of a number of assets, where the values have gone up, so depreciation's gone up, and also contributed assets from development, and that's land development in the region is much higher than we anticipated, so our asset values have grown there. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr Titezal? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, just that we're going, we're in June now, another couple of weeks to the end of the financial year, and all these figures we've been hearing, hopefully we'll end up in the right spot in another couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor O'Savary?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 9.2, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation on page 34. The recommendation is also on page 34. Would a councillor like to move the motion, please?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Mayor, contained on pages 34 and 35. Sorry, the recommendations on page 34 alone, but the document extends to a couple of pages. That the council note the publicly advertised contracts awarded under delegated authority and tenders that have been advertised but yet to be awarded.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Savary. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Look, it's basically a roadmap in relation to our tendering process and contracts. There's a couple there which I particularly like, because I'm very keen on the beautification of our city. For me, it's a very important consideration. Contract 1820, which is Centre Road Parking, an installation of street trees in Nixon Street. There's a substantial amount of money involved there. And the other one, which I think's flown under the radar, was raised, I think, earlier by councillor Sumner, was in relation to the concept design of pedestrian overpass at the Shepparton Railway Station. That is a progressive move. I think it illustrates the fact that it gives us a lot more opportunities and ease of access to pedestrian safety, and also potentially would open up that section of Vaughan Street sometime down in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Savary. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Nope. Any closing comments, councillor O'Savary?
No, thank you.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 9.3, Local Law Number One, Community Living on page 37. The recommendation is also on page 37. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson, do I have a second to please?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Adam? You better go. Councillor Adam, second. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. This is our community living local laws, number one. It has to be reassessed every, I think it's two years now, four years? And that's what we've done. We've been through it all, with the help of staff, we've gone through and made some adjustments. It's very hard, when you go into actually defining law, what this is, to actually get to point exactly what you want. A noise, for instance, with one issue with scare guns, but that would have taken out our hail guns, so we had to be very conscious of that. It is a very complicated scenario, but I just note one there that really is worth noting, and that's no roosters in residential areas. I'm concerned where councillor Jovanetti is going to live for the next few days, but I'm sure he will find him a home somewhere. And another one that's very interesting is expand the definition unsightly to include maintaining and building in a state of good repair and appearance, including undertaking temporary repairs as required to avoid the appearance of neglect out of the character with other allotments in the vicinity. So that basically means that where before we couldn't do anything about something sitting down the street that was really ugly and giving the whole scenario of our street a bad look, we now have some power to do something, so I think that's a great move. There's areas that would be really nice if you had one building taken out, or covered up or fixed, and we haven't been able to do that, and now we can. So I encourage that and recommend it.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll just follow up on councillor Patterson's comments. There's been a few changes. I think all councils have been briefed, and I think we're all fairly well aware of them, and I personally think there have been constructive changes.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak, sorry, against the motion? Sorry, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sumner?
Pest control measures are included, including prevention of fruit fly in backyards. It's going to be required that we pick up our fruit and prune the trees and make sure that it doesn't impact on our agriculture. And it's also removed clauses related to the mall, and some of those were very outdated. There was no photography without a permit, but in the days of smartphones, that's kind of redundant, so it was good to get those sorted.
Very good. Thank you very much, councillor Sumner. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Patterson?
No, thank you.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 9.4, Local Law Number Two, Procedures for Council Meetings and Common Seal on page 42. The recommendation is on page 42 and 43. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second to please? Councillor O'Savary? Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, the Local Government Act requires the council to make a local law to govern its conduct of meetings of the council and special committees of council, and anyone who's observed council meetings over any period of time will realise why that's such a necessity, to establish the rules of engagement, because after all, the council is in effect a decision-making process, and we need the process in place to determine how those decisions are made. And the local law governing the conduct of these meetings hasn't been reviewed since 2009. And in March, council resolved to commence the statutory process. We received only two submissions, which is a little bit surprising, submissions from John Gray and Rob McLean, and on hearing the content of those submissions, some modifications to the local laws have been made. I think the process has been worthwhile. It would have been nice to get more input from the community, and I'm sure there'll be varied opinions around both the table and in the community about whether some of the changes could have been a bit more dramatic, or even a bit more conservative, depending on your point of view. But it's been a worthwhile process, and this is the procedures under which this council will operate now until it's reviewed the next time.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazelman. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just to support the comments made by councillor Hazelman, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Sumner?
I'm objecting because of clause 61.1.3, which I've had a little bit of an issue with, but I'll start off by just saying that there's not so much law, this procedure. It's more like a code or a guideline. Even though we're removing these procedural motions from the text, councillors still have every right to move the same wording, depending on the will of the chair, obviously, but it does help to control the meeting, that's not the problem here. But for efficiency, I'll go through each clause that I'm not particularly happy with. I think perhaps being able to email all councillors about a special meeting isn't quite enough. It needs to read 'received' rather than 'serve' to every councillor, just in case we miss an email. I think clause 59.1, councillors may submit a notice of motion on the form approved by the CEO. I don't remember having a form, an official form, and I can't remember any obvious reason of why we need to have an official form, so I think that just complicates matters. I mean, we could write it on a napkin if we wanted to before, and I don't think we need to have the inconvenience of that. We also need to, I believe, remove clause 61.1.3, which was the issue, because it's rejecting notices that are vague or unclear in intention. Now, I've been on the receiving end of that a few times, and I just find that it's too subjective. If you have a less-than-generous interpretation, you can essentially stifle debate. 62.2, the notice of motion cannot be accepted by the chair unless it's listed on the agenda. I believe the chair should have unfettered access to do what they like, they are the chair. I don't see why we'd be voting to give councillors less opportunity to put forward issues for debate. 78.3, having a no vote, no vote at all abstaining is to be taken as a vote against. I understand that that's not necessarily the case, but the wording actually indicates that we're actually voting against when perhaps we don't have enough information to make a decision. 82.8, extra regulation around electronic petitions. We can accept it if it's satisfied that it's authentic, it comes from a legitimate website, but what is a legitimate website? There's no definition. That pretty much rules out all petitions on social media, and if we don't accept those, we might as well scrap all petitions, because essentially we don't know who's signing them, where they're coming from, and at that rate, we should probably consider getting rid of pro forma letters too, which are just photocopy things of the same words. So we're in an age of electronic communications, time we got used to that. 83.2, this is in regards to an objectionable remark. We are required to withdraw and apologise immediately without qualification or explanation, and this is if the chair requires us to. Now, no offence to the mayor or any former mayors, but I think that that gives the chair a bit too much power. We need to have an explanation, at the very least, of why we'd be, yeah.
Do any councillors oppose an extension? Did you want an extension of time, councillor Sumner?
I've got a few left.
Does any councillor oppose an extension? You can continue if you wish to, councillor Summer.
All right, for entertainment's sake. So we're not allowing an explanation of why we said such an objectionable remark, or allowing us to justify why we said it. I think that denies natural justice. We should be afforded a right of reply and have it put to a vote. So ninety-five point two point three, which is public question time. I think refusing questions to a matter which has previously been addressed at a council meeting actually rules out pretty much everything. It wouldn't be something that was up for discussion unless we've dealt with it at some point. I think there's too much leeway to refuse questions, but I've been told we rarely refuse questions, so that's comforting. Ninety-five point five, a question disallowed by the CEO will be provided to councillors on request. How are we supposed to know what the question was if, if, like, there's no way we can ask if we're not told about the question? Perhaps this should precede some kind of a log that councillors have access to, otherwise it just seems a bit ridiculous. So they're the reasons, but most of all, it's because of the vague and unclear wording on that one.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Hazelman?
I think as predicted, not everybody was going to be happy. But it demonstrates the need of why you do need to have a local law, a law, to determine the procedures for council meetings and common seal. In the absence of these actual local law, how would we have dealt with all of the issues just raised by councillor Summers? She had a point of view and a valid point of view, but in the democratic process, they weren't, that wasn't the prevailing view of the time. And so we've now got a local law that will, you know, determine what the processes of this council are going to be until it's reviewed again.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazelman. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour, against, motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item nine point five, Adoption of the Procurement Policy, on page forty-six. The recommendation is also on page forty-six. Would a councillor please like to move a motion?
I'll move that motion, Madam Mayor.
Like to move, councillor Summer?
Recommendation as listed on page forty-six, that the council adopt the procurement policy thirteen dot pole one.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Do I have a second to please, councillor Patterson? Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd just say that we have got a massive budget, as we're going to discuss later, and procurement policy pretty much directs where all of that goes. Obviously, there's a lot of flow-on consequences of where the money goes, and we've got a responsibility there. So I'm glad we're looking at the triple bottom line aspects of this, economic, environmental, and social sustainability, because that will deliver the best outcomes of our community. It's not about getting the cheapest product, it's about the greater benefit. It would have been nice if we could have included some kind of contingency clause where if something comes over tender by about twenty percent, we immediately go back out to tender as a non-negotiable, just to sort of send a message that we want to stay on target. But apparently, that's been discussed and it could be done. It's just not going to be part of the policy. I'd just like to say top marks for the local content and environmental consideration, they're ten percent each. So that's all going back out into the local environment and, yeah, the local and environment content. So that was the same as last time we reviewed this, and it hasn't changed.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, this policy is required by state government legislation, the Local Government Act, to be revisited by council every twelve months, and that's what we're doing. It is very important that we do revisit it, makes us concentrate on it, have a good hard look at it. Without it, we'd be sitting here till midnight every weekend, doing little bits of procurement and purchasing, et cetera. This gives us power for people down the line to go ahead and do that for us.
Great, thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Summer?
No, thank you.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour, against, motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item nine point six, very important item, the Budget, 2018-2019, on page forty-nine. It's quite a large recommendation, on pages forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. Do I have a councillor that would like to move a motion, please? Everyone's checking out the Budget pages. Would a councillor like to move a motion? No one wants to move the budget.
I'll move that motion, the recommendations as listed on the pages you mentioned, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Do I have a second to please? Councillor O'Sullivan, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to see you read it.
Yes, I can. It'll take about two hours. Look, this is probably the most important, one of the most important documents that we vote on each year. It provides our financial futures, I suppose, of council. It stipulates and documents the spending that we conduct on behalf of our ratepayers. And there's a lot to go through, obviously. It's a long process. There's been, obviously, a lot of to-ing and fro-ing with councillors and also our executive. We've gone out with, to the public, obviously, consultation has been, I think, performed better this year than other years. And like other years, or similar to other years, we've actually made some changes in respect to proposals that we've received from the community. I'll just want to mention one, which is not a big one, but it sort of concerns me to a degree. I live out Shepparton East, and obviously, we're putting in a walking track out that direction. And the original budget listed that we should start that project from the Shepherd and End. Well, it made sense to start at the Shepherd and East End, because it's a project that will take probably a few years to deliver. And the community came in, expressed their opinions, is very logical. We accepted that and we made those changes. So I just feel good that the fact that this is not a, it's a pretty fluid document up until tonight, obviously. It's flexible, it's proven to be so, and I'd just like to thank the community for offering their opinions and their submissions. And I think it's a very good document, and hopefully it'll be adopted tonight.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Councillor O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, it's, from my perspective, I think it's been long overdue, but since the Andrews government brought in rate capping, it's made us a lot more accountable. Drilling down into the funding, the way we spend our money, which I'm sure is a positive to the community of Greater Shepherdon. No one likes to pay rates, but the sad reality is, like death and taxes, there are a certain inevitability in our community. It's interesting and encouraging to see that we have not made any application to the government to go beyond the rate cap, which is a testament to the organisation being a little bit proactive, well, not a little bit, but very proactive. One of the interesting things that came out of the budget was the capacity of the councillors to discuss how we could best spend our hard-earned money and be fiscally responsible. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, our role as councillors and also the organisation as a whole is to be very responsible, and there's a large framework of matters which we need to deal with in terms of the state government. Very high level of accountability, and if anybody reads the paper, you will have seen that Wadonga recently got a bit of a hurry-up in relation to the manner in which they spend their dollars, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor O'Sullivan. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yes, I feel like I have to speak against the motion. It's, a lot of money's going towards large projects, so just let me find my place. Don't time me just yet, because I've got a bit to say. All right.
Nice.
So, I'm taking issue mainly with the dramatic downturn in reserves. Cash and cash equivalent is reducing from around thirty million this year down to ten point eight million by 2021. And councillor O'Sullivan was mentioning being fiscally responsible. So overall, total current assets are projected to decrease by over fifty percent by 2021, mainly due to three major projects, and these are Cosgrove landfill, the Wellsford Street upgrade, and the elephant in the room, which is the new SAM, and we're doing those all at once. We don't actually begin to recover our finances for another four years, and I think that's a concern because of the environment of rate capping, like councillor O'Sullivan said. So I don't believe they need to be funded concurrently. I think they arguably put us in a risky position. I know that the organisation is comfortable, but councillors need to be extra vigilant, because we're the ones who hold the ultimate responsibility here. I can understand Cosgrove. The waste levy has been putting money in reserves specifically for this project, and we propose to responsibly borrow six million dollars the next financial year to meet the difference. That's a long-term project, and I think it ticks the boxes of roads, rates, and rubbish. But moving forward with SAM at the same time does not have my support. I think it should be pushed forward two to four years to stagger out the risk. I think any other project would need to be completely shovel-ready and have all funding available from community sources, as promised, before any sod was turned. And so far, I don't believe that SAM has met those milestones. Where, what we were told, that SAM would be funded by a loan, and it wouldn't compete with any other budget line items, but that's changed. So it's depleting our reserves now. If a more important project comes along in the next few years, we won't have the resources to pursue it. So successive councils will be disadvantaged, because we're in such a hurry to build this thing. So, yeah, there's a lot more to guess. It's never too late to postpone. The money will remain in reserves, gaining interest until such time as we require it, and that'll give the foundation more time to meet their milestones and allow us more time to better prepare. On a positive note, though, it's good to see that we've consolidated our differential rates and reduced the municipal charge. Wasn't necessarily off our back. The state government reduced the municipal charge cap from twenty-five percent to ten. And unfortunately, they left the definition of the municipal charge intact, which, as I say every year, is misleading. The municipal charge is described as an administration fee, but if it was a fee, it would be included over and above rates.
Time. Do you request an extension? Does anyone object to an extended time for councillor Summer? No, continue councillor Summer.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be included over and above, like a levy, but it's not, you know, over and above. It's embedded into the general collection. So it's a bit complex, but essentially, if the charge was scrapped, we'd still collect the same amount of rates, but the high-end ratepayers would need to meet the balance. Lastly, I've never really been a fan of user pays for rubbish collections. I think we need to be working on subsidising that to prevent rubbish dumping. And I think we should move forward on actioning complimentary tip tickets, which has been listed as an action in the Waste Strategy since 2013, but that's all.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I just feel like I've relived a dream or something of four years ago, councillor Summer. Just on a couple of things with SAM, putting it back, investing the money. Interest rates are less than one percent these days, and building inflation running at somewhere around six percent. Though it's getting dearer and dearer every time we do that, so I certainly would support that. What I'd like to go back to is the budget itself. We hope to raise seventy-six million dollars with that. Hopefully, we can, with our great staff, they can go and hopefully match that pretty well with government grants and other forms of external fundraising. And, you know, we generally run up, you know, around a hundred and fifty-odd million dollars we'll have turning over the year, which is very important. One thing that surprised me, though, was, I think every councillor was contacted over twelve months ago and we first did away with the ceiling date on paying our rates in February. It was a tradition, you wait till the last day and go and stand out with every other man at the front, and hit your hand on the counter and say, you know, rates are too dear for everyone, anyway. It was basically a tradition that ran through town. There was a new train of thought that come through, that we should spread the cost over a period of time, would make it easier for people. When that happened, which it did last year, I was contacted by quite a few people complaining about it, and I'm sure everyone else was. But since then, the rating strategy went out, and I think there was two returns, you know, querying that. So got to admit, what the office has put up has worked very well. The concern was before that people wait till the cut-off time and they become ill or something. They've made no arrangements, and all of a sudden, they're stuck with this big bill. They've made no allowances for it whatsoever. This way, and I personally use the ten, ten payments, it's so easy. You go and sign up once, and it just normally comes out of your bank every, every, every month, so I'd certainly support that now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
So I would first like to congratulate our dedicated staff for their hard work, because having seen this process, it is, it is very obvious that it's not, it doesn't happen overnight, so a lot of work has gone into it, and the processes and the right processes have been followed. It has gone through the submission process, community consultation and everything, and, and community did submit what it wanted to include in the budget, and it has, and the submissions, some of them have been heard. So congratulations to the council staff for preparing this budget. Some of the key results, they were guided by the financial principles, and it's pleasing to see that, you know, significant achievement has been made in terms of following those three guiding principles, one of which is about generating and operating surplus, second is about to have fully-fund asset renewals, and then third is borrow responsibly. So in all these three, we have done a very good job, after seeing the details of the, of the budget. Another highlight is that, of course, the rate increases have been capped at two point two five percent, in line with the FERGO rate systems. And obviously, this has been made possible due to, by deriving operational efficiencies. So that's another, you know, aspect where council staff need to be congratulated in order to, going back and reviewing their expenses in a way that it does not, you know, go beyond the two point two five percent. The, of course, as councillor Summer has mentioned, the reduction in the municipal charge from two hundred and sixty-two dollars to one hundred and ninety-five dollars, that is, that is positive. It's, I'm sure it will make a difference. And I think the best part of having seen this whole process and being involved in it is that the community got an opportunity to present submissions, and as, and, and the outcome of that submission process was that there were certain amendments to the draft budget, one of which was about fifty thousand dollars that were allocated to Macklinen Street landscaping, so that was not included in the draft budget. Then this Shepherdon Food Share contribution as a, as an outcome of, outcome of their submission, the allocation was increased from twenty thousand to thirty thousand. And last but not least, the allocation to Off Leash Dog Park. And I was, personally, I was very impressed by the, by the community involvement in this area, that there were a lot of submissions that were made around improvements to the Off Leash Dog Park. And so the, this budget was updated, and fifteen thousand dollars have been allocated. So this is, this is really a good outcome. So again, it's, I see it as a very responsible budget in terms of the projections for the next four years.
Time.
Everything looks positive. Thank you.
Need an extra three minutes, no?
No, I don't want to. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I'd also like to just add a couple of comments to that, and most of it has been said, but obviously, yes, very, very pleased. A lot of hard work does go into this, this budget. It's not an easy process, but I think we've all highlighted that when the community do come in and submit, we get positive results. So it's a very strong message that we certainly do listen, and we can certainly make a difference, and that money can be found. If we can find it for you, we certainly will. So that's something for the future. Get the word out, come in and really submit if there's something that you feel is relevant. And it's been very positive and very successful in this budget. So well done to the councillors, well done to council staff. And I think we've got a great budget, it's a responsible budget, and I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing the outcome. Councillor Adam, do you have any closing comments after all of that commentary?
I'll wrap it up, Madam Mayor, irrespective of councillor Summer's concerns, and I'm sure they're valid in her own mind. It's, well, I don't think that's disparaging. I'm sure they are. Look, fundamentally, it's, it's once again a financially responsible and well-balanced budget.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, councillor Adam. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour, against?
Division, please, Miss Madam Mayor.
Division, if we could please have all those in favour, councillor Hazelman, councillor Jovanetti, councillor Summer, councillor O'Sullivan, councillor Abdullah, councillor Patterson, councillor Adam, against councillor Summer. I should have gone councillor Summer first. Councillor Summer, motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item ten point one on page fifty-nine, Sustainable Decision-Making Policy. The recommendation is also on page fifty-nine. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Summer, do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yep, just quickly. It's a policy that's been around for a little while. It's gone through some name changes. I remember the first time I read this, when it was first adopted in 2012, it kind of had a bit of a wishy-washy description. I wasn't sure what it was about, but essentially, it's reducing greenhouse emissions, embracing clean energy, limiting wasteful practices, and protecting our environment. So it's the work of a small, dedicated team who are driven by the idea of climate change, and they put a lot of hard work into it, and it's come out with some good outcomes.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, councillor Summer's done a very good job of that, thank you.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam?
I just want to support councillor Summer's comments, earn some brownie points back. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Did we get that? Councillor Adam's supported those comments, councillor Summer. Thank you very much for that, councillor Adam. Any closing comments, councillor Summer?
No, thank you.
We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour, against, motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item ten point two on page sixty-four, Golden River Valley Tourism Memorandum of, sorry, Memorandum, I can't say it, Memorandum of Understanding, M-O-U might be easier, of Greater Shepherdon City Council. It's on page sixty-four. Recommendation is also on page sixty-four. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Patterson, do I have a second to please? Councillor Jovanetti? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. Our CEO's done a lot of work on this. The Memorandum of Understanding was something that needed to be signed. This organisation is made up of three other councillors and ourselves. We are by far. We are by far the lion's share of finances to this and there was a period there where we were paying most of the money but getting very little reply for our services. So there's some new people gone into the head of that organisation, which have done a very good job, I believe. And they haven't been put on notice, but we're very conscious of we want to see some value for our dollars and that is currently happening, I believe. And this Memorandum of Understanding defines all that. We've gone on for two-year deals with extensions. Hopefully, the other councils will accept that and work with us rather than sometimes not working with us. Yeah, certainly I support. And what our CEO's done to get that up has been, there's been a lot of work involved in it. Hopefully, we have success.
Thank you very much councillor Patterson. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just reiterating what councillor Patterson has already stated. This is a twelve-month agreement with Greater Shepherd and City Council, Mitchellshire, Marindindie Shire and Strathbogieshire. As councillor Patterson said, we were a little bit concerned, I suppose, previously that we weren't perhaps getting the exposure that we thought we should. That has now been turned around and people within the community may be seeing the ads on television now that actually promote Shepherd and not just the other municipalities. So I think that the arrangement we have in place is a good one and we'll see where we go after the twelve-month period.
Thank you very much councillor Jovanetti. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Any closing comments councillor Patterson? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 10.3, St Andrews Road Planning Application 2018, 118. The recommendation is on page 71, 72 and 73. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer, what would you like to move?
I would like to move the recommendation as printed on 71, 72 and 73 of the agenda.
Thank you councillor Summer. Do I have a second to please?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would, thank you. My understanding is that the cottage set itself up under the assumption that it was exempt from obtaining a planning permit under the Health and Wellbeing Act. Now, I understand that this is a grey area because there's no definition of a drug and rehab centre under the planning scheme. But it also doesn't fall under the criteria for crisis accommodation or a community care unit. That our offices found the use is primarily residential because rehabilitation programmes are provided off-site. So the cottage has done the responsible thing here and applied for a planning permit as a response to the community pressure. Officially, they request permission to operate short-term accommodation for addiction rehabilitation. So yes, they deal with people in recovery, but these people are beyond the detox stage and addiction is not necessarily a requirement for entry. And they say that the core purpose of the cottage is not necessarily drug and alcohol rehabilitation per se, but transforming lives on a broader scale. Now, we've all listened to the residents of St Andrews Road and there's no doubt that they are experiencing very real stress and concern. Some say that the issue has consumed their lives and is impacting on their mental health. But I struggle to understand that because the cottage is far less dangerous than, say, an emergency department or a mental health ward and those places treat people at the height of their addiction in the acute phase. But very few people ever complain about hospital upgrades and expansions. So I'm a nurse and I deal with people who have addictions and I can tell you from experience, they're not who you'd think, they're not bad people. There's a doctor I work with who believes ninety-five percent of people who suffer addiction are self-medicating due to childhood trauma. He calls it McKellar's Law. Child abuse equals mental illness equals drug addiction equals crime. It's this cycle and it's epidemic at the moment and we need to provide help to break the chain. Crimes of addiction are rarely driven by malice or an inherent will to do bad things, but by the drive to continue this self-medication. People who are incarcerated due to crimes of addiction are an enormous burden to our criminal system and community rehab reduces the risk of this crime. These facilities are assets and they're being thwarted by what I consider to be fear and not necessarily fact. So there's a lot of accusations running around. It almost seems like anything untoward is being blamed on the cottage without anything substantiated. Now, I know that we've been sent pictures, but pictures don't necessarily hold up in a court of law. And I sincerely hope that these objectors are never touched with addiction themselves. Now, this could be either illicit addiction or prescription addiction, whether it's themselves or a loved one. If they actually had that experience, they may change their minds.
Time, time. Do you want an extension councillor Summer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is everyone happy for an extension councillors? Continue councillor Summer.
Okay, the trouble is, we're a very conservative area. We vote conservative, we read the Herald Sun and other programmes that vilify people who are vulnerable in our community, unemployed, disabled, other minority groups and those suffering addiction. Unfortunately, it's created an underclass because no one wants to tackle the problem and instead it's become a culture of victim blaming. So I need to look at the facts here. And it's frustrating to hear, I'm not against a rehabilitation centre, but it needs to go somewhere else. It cannot be moved on to a more appropriate area. The cottage teaches life skills in real life. It must be in a residential area to enable clients to develop strategies that deal with everyday triggers. It's not just abstinence, it's having the ability to return to bad habits and choosing not to. No matter where this facility went, the same prejudice and fear would drive residents within a twenty-kilometre radius to object. And we saw that with the last Actso application that proposed to be out on the farmland. Now councillors, we've heard some pretty amazing accounts from people who are close to suicide, living on the streets, estranged from their families or simply unable to function in society. But thanks to the cottage, they're getting the help they need. The cottage purportedly has a ninety percent success rate and has helped over seventy people since it first opened. That's seventy people who now have the opportunity for a new start in life and many more if we approve the permit. The alternative of not approving the permit will cost jobs and displace the current residents who will once again be at risk of becoming a danger to themselves or others. I don't know about you, but I'd rather they have clean addicts in a controlled environment than users out on the street. So they received seventy-five submissions in support of this place and only twenty objections that weren't just those pro-forma photocopied letters. So ultimately, we just need to make a decision and that will be the end result, but it's a moral decision. We'll either uphold some prejudice or we'll give countless people a better chance in life.
Thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. I'm not totally convinced this cottage needs a permit. Everybody seems to agree that we need this facility. The argument is where? Do we want these clients out in the street or in a cottage? It is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. I wouldn't want to live next to it. I wouldn't want to live next to a telecommunications tower or a truck bypass or a dog kennel. But council will pass those permits. Someone needs to live near it. The issue I have, I've taken a lot of notice of the support that the facility does have from a lot of the neighbours, the surrounding schools, all support it. There's a lot of support out there in the community. And I think a lot of the issues that people have that come to us will be alleviated by the conditions that have been put in there. The overnight worker, that has to be awake and up all night, I think is a great advancement. The two-metre fence between six and eight, St Adens Road, if there is any issues there, that should overcome that. And the conflict resolution document is very important. So if there is a problem, it can be worked through and that is a sensible way to move forward. It's argued by some that the council will be setting a precedent by granting this application. I don't agree. Every application is individual and any precedent is only as good as the next council resolution. So we're not setting a precedent or we make decisions every day of the week. We never make a precedent, so I don't agree with that. Those people in there in their own desire and free to leave at any time. They have broken their addiction cycle and they've put their hands up for help. I don't want us to let them down. I also have, I admire the people who've been behind this, the work they've done. I've been involved in three through my time with council. These people have been trying to get one up and why they keep doing it to themselves, I don't know. And I really do admire them for the work they've done. You know, I heard someone say that it's a money-making venture. For God's sake, who would try and open a rehab centre to make money out of it, for God's sake? It's just unbelievable. So I certainly support the centre and I wish them all luck in the future.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion?
I'd like to speak.
Councillor O'Zavary, put your hand up please as we move. Councillor O'Zavary?
Would you like to go first?
Thank you, I will. Thank you councillor O'Zavary.
Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, let me personally thank all the people, whether in support or not of this grant application, who made verbal and written submissions to council concerning this obviously very emotional issue. I particularly wish to thank and note my admiration at the courage displayed by current and former clients of the cottage programme who presented to the assembled councillors and staff last Tuesday at the McIntosh Centre. I imagine that it can't be easy or desirable to share one's most intimate personal addiction struggles with a group of strangers in such a clinical atmosphere. But the very fact that it can't be easy or desirable indicates to me how important the cottage programme is to the people who have benefited from it. Important and life-changing, if not life-saving, for not only the direct beneficiaries but for the countless other people directly or indirectly affected by the resurrection of one person's life. Parents, children, siblings, other relatives and friends, the list goes on. I genuinely doubt that any councillor here tonight, or community member for that matter, is questioning the merits of the programme or its undeniable positive results. This said, Madam Mayor, tonight we as a council are here to decide whether this permit application should be granted or not, based in my mind on the suitability of the current site. Our officers, in accordance with the Planning Act and with specific conditions attached, as has been mentioned by councillor Patterson, have recommended that we do grant. In considering this issue, I referred to the duties of a councillor as defined by the Local Government Act 1989, specifically Part 1A, 3C, subsection 1, which states that the primary objective of a council is to endeavour to achieve the best outcomes for the local community, having regard for the long-term and cumulative effects of decisions. And also an additional objective of council, subsection 2C, clearly says to improve the overall quality of life of people in the local community, which obviously includes the clients of the cottage programme. These two objectives initially left me quite conflicted. However, for the following reason, I must note this permit application, based not only on the physical location of this facility, but also for the following. A facility such as Cottage needs community support, not only for the peace of mind of local residents, but for the clients themselves. Establishing such a facility up in an area where neighbours wrongly, I believe, look upon the facility and its participants with disdain cannot be a positive effect on the successful outcomes for the participants of the programme. Whether these concerns are valid or perceptions only, it is incumbent upon councillors, I believe, to consider the social disturbance its position has and may create not just today but into the future. The familiar phrase that council's responsibilities should be confined to rates, roads and rubbish disappeared many years ago with the advent of cost shifting by both state and federal governments, which has now resulted in councils delivering a host of community services that were once not even envisioned. Drug and alcohol addiction is no longer...
Time, would you like an extension?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor.
All councillors in favour for time for councillor Adam? Continue councillor Adam.
As I said, the familiar phrase that council's responsibilities should be confined to rates, roads and rubbish disappeared many years ago with the advent of cost shifting by both state and federal governments, which has now resulted in councils delivering a host of community services that were never even envisioned at one time. Drug and alcohol addiction is no longer talked about in whispers at family gatherings, it is clearly visible. It is destroying more lives than ever and I firmly believe it is a council responsibility to lead with practical actions. This said, Madam Mayor, and in line with the active resolution that was carried on the 21st of June 2016 stating that council further consider the critical health issue of addiction recovery facilities and that staff provide a report back for council's consideration within three months. To my knowledge, that hasn't happened. We as a council and a community can no longer be satisfied with kicking this can down the road. This plague of drug addiction and alcohol addiction is a clear and present danger to the very fabric of our society and this council, as should every other Victorian council, cannot confine their involvement on these issues to just planning decisions, but rather lead the way in tackling this community destroying cancer that has permeated every level of our society. So Madam Mayor, irrespective of the outcome of this vote here tonight, I keenly look forward to working with my fellow councillors and council staff to explore any appropriate options that council can actively participate in to fulfil one of our primary objectives of achieving the best outcomes for the local community. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hazelman?
When councillor Adam was reading the act, he probably also would have come across the section that talks about councillors administering the Planning and Environment Act. Administering the Planning and Environment Act means assessing an application. Does it meet the conditions of the planning scheme? And based on the professional advice of our ten planners, this application meets those requirements. And the other components that will come into the discussion are simply not elements of the act that should be considered. We went through a day and heard submissions and, look, I'm not going to take anything away from any of the people that submitted on the day. It was emotional, it was heartfelt, it was powerful and it was impactful. We all heard the stories from the neighbours of this facility, people who'd been through the facility and I'm sure everyone, their stories resonated. But in summary, what is going to be provided on this site is short-term accommodation for people recovering from addictions. Communal shared accommodation activities and attendance at off-site programmes for alcoholic or Narcotics Anonymous meetings and the twelve-step workshops. I would suggest that if this was a different model of simply purchasing a house, similarly to what the Ministry of Housing did a few years ago, rather than build estates or large conglomerates of houses, build one house in a community and establish people there. If this operation had been a single house with four residents, it wouldn't even require a planning permit. But because of the scale of the operation and a judgmental call that a planning permit was in fact required because it was deemed to be more than a residential facility, we're going through this process. I think the process is failing the people of the cottage in the way that they've been subjected to it. And in a lot of ways, the process is probably failing the residents in the neighbourhood as well. And I certainly will be supporting the process.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Sutton?
I realise this is a very emotional issue and in painting, we must consider this issue on its planning merits. That is not to say that we cannot consider the location it is in and the amenity of this area. We also must consider relevant issues, conflicting objectives, community disadvantage or gain, as well as sustainable development that is of benefit to the whole community. In this instance, I have listened to both sides of the argument and note that there are many positives for this application to be granted. But I think that there are many more negative effects that we should be taking into consideration. The cottage is currently located in an established residential area which has been home and still is to many older residents that have lived, worked and now retired in this area. Over the past few years, we have seen a younger demographic moving in as it is very close to good schools, sporting amenities, local shops and is a few minutes from the CBD and major supermarket. I agree that there is a great need for this type of facility, but I would like to see one where there is supervision by qualified staff 24/7 and that it is not located in an established residential area such as this.
Thank you very much councillor Sutton. Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
I would be saying a few things that councillor Summer has already said and councillor Dennis Patterson has also mentioned. But nevertheless, I want you to hear my thoughts on this issue. So we all know that drug and alcohol addiction is a serious problem and Greater Shepherd and is not immune to it. It is a significant and tragic issue that affects real people, their loved ones and the communities in which they live. We all agree that such centres are needed to get the alcohol and drug victims a second chance, to get back to their normal lives and lead an addiction-free life. So for these people, a support system and facility such as the cottage must be there when and where it is needed. There should be a place to provide safe environment to people who have made a decision to abstain from... from drug and alcohol and recover from their addiction. So our problem has been that we have not been able to agree on the right or appropriate site for such facilities. Not in my backyard is the most common response and sentiment when dealing with, when deciding about the sites for such facilities. In case of the land use planning application for the Cottage, our main considerations should be around the concerns that include and the concerns that were raised by the residents and by the objectors. So the concerns included a lack of adherence to the planning permit process, noise, amenity of the neighbourhood, lack of trained staff on site, absence of staff during and after business hours and management of complaints from resident and neighbours. Now, these were the concerns. So first thing about the process, as for the setting up of the facility without the legal permit, I think that councillor Hazelman has highlighted that it's a grey area, the process is not really clear. Nevertheless, the owners did acknowledge this gap and the error and a corrective action was put in place, was sought. Hence, we are seeing this planning permit application recommendation and discussion. The set of conditions that accompany the permit application approval recommendation, they address these concerns that were highlighted and provide safeguards against these concerns, as I understand. So if you look at the permit conditions, there's a condition around staff members to be on site and such staff members must be suitably qualified and experienced in the management and supervision of people with drug and alcohol dependency. So it's a very clear safety measure, I would say, which could sort of, which addresses most of the concerns around absence of staff and noise and complaints. Then the condition is also, one condition is also about complaints handling register and then there's about, there's maximum number of persons which is restricted to 23. So these are the, these are the conditions which, as far as I can see, they do provide safeguards against the concerns.
I would also... Time, would you like an extension?
Can I please have an extension?
Your councillors agree with your extension, you may continue.
Thanks. I would also like to note that some other complaints or concerns that were raised by the objectors, such as clients are relapsing and clients are attempting suicide, these are outside the scope of planning permit application assessment and they may fall under the operational matters, which are not the relevant criteria while assessing these applications, this particular planning application. In the end, I would just like to say that we need to have more compassion, empathy and positivity in dealing with these matters, which are for the better outcome of the whole community. So as far as I'm concerned, I am looking at the overall community benefit. You know, there are neighbours of the Cottage who have shown serious concerns, but then at the same time, we have also heard from the neighbours and community members who have shown wholehearted support to this, to this project. The set of permit conditions for the Cottage should give some comfort to the anxious neighbours, I believe. This is a community-led initiative and it should be seen as a benefit rather than a burden to the community in addressing the growing drug and alcohol addiction problem. Details of objections and corresponding responses are also mentioned in the report. So yeah, this is, this, yeah, that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Jevanetti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You'll get your chance.
Thank you. Often as councillors, we're required by decisions that affect people in many ways, sometimes for their benefit and others to their detriment. On this occasion, I'm sure that there will be much conjecture as to who is right and who is wrong. When faced with a situation like this, we can only do what we believe is right. I have no issue with the services that the Cottage provide to their residents to assist them to break the habit of drugs and alcohol. I do have issues with the lack of accountability the Cottage have towards quality assurance and accreditation standards, but this is a matter for another time. From a planning perspective, a drug and rehab facility in a residential zone is allowable as long as a permit is sought. This is happening in this instance, albeit 12 months after it commenced operations. We as councillors have seen first-hand facilities and heard from service users and their parents on the services that are provided. From the account of those we have spoken with, the service offered by the Cottage appears successful in many cases, and this is a great achievement. But have the rights of the nearby residents been taken into consideration? I don't feel that they have. There have been many emotive statements from both parties of what has happened with residents of the Cottage and residents who live in close proximity. If the Cottage had applied for a permit for a drug and alcohol facility prior to opening, we would not be in the position we're now in. One of the applicants has stated that he felt guilty that the matter had gone to council in the way that it has, possibly meaning that it could have been resolved by adopting proper planning processes. My family is not immune to drugs. A close relative had considerable, had considerable issues with a son who was addicted and the grief that family went through, you can't imagine. I spoke with a parent at the consultation meeting last week and to hear his family's story was harrowing. To get to the point they were at with their sibling would have been tortuous. I do have the deepest sympathy for the families of addicts and acknowledge what they go through. I'm not against a drug and rehab facility for Shepparton, but I don't believe that St. George's Road site is suitable. There are too many variables that need to come into consideration. I do hope that a suitable location is found for this facility in the very near future as they appear to be doing very good work.
Thank you very much councillor Jevanetti. Councillor O'Zavari, would you like to now, I think you're the only one left.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've seen it all in 38 years in my other job. Drugs are most certainly a scourge on our society. We should do everything within our power to eliminate it. Call it generational bias, but I'm a person that believes there's a right way and a wrong way. I support accredited facilities which ideally, but not exclusively, are supported by government funding, together with a framework of legislative regulation which governs the running of them and further, there is a partnership arrangement in place with state government health authorities and is also offers protection to the residents. I've no issue with the concept or its intentions, but it troubles me with its manner of inception and that it operated and continues to operate without the appropriate planning approval. I struggle to accept that this was an oversight or a miscalculation when measured against the background of the rehabilitation space it seeks to operate in. With the likes of Odyssey House in Mollyoolah and Benella, which I had a lot to do with, and I had a lot to do with, a well-known living drug rehab facility set in a semi-rural setting as an example. In that case, Odyssey House made planning application to the Benella council prior to establishing the facility, that's an important point, prior to establishing the facility, and Odyssey House would be one of the most famous facilities going around. In that case, Benella council, the responsible authority refused the application and the matter found itself before VCAT. Ultimately, VCAT approved the permit over council objection. At paragraph 106 of the judgment in the matter by senior members Jane Monk and Margaret Baird, they said, I quote, "The evidence pointed to a real need for such a facility within the Hume Health region and indeed an active demand for such service by the local health service providers. The Odyssey House programme is one which no party suggested was not an effective service to meet the needs of the region. The experience at Lower Plenty, which is where the main Odyssey House is, which is a former convent of some sort, demonstrates that a spacious semi-rural environment is one that works well for the sort of therapeutic community-based programmes that lie at the centre of Odyssey's approach. It follows, we think, their words, not mine, that a downtown Benella, Wangaratta or Shepparton location or a confined site would not be suitable to meet the community's needs." That's VCAT's assessment. That is a decision that VCAT made. Another example is a contentious EXO application with Moira Shire for a drug and rehab facility at Waters Road, New Merke. This application was also refused by Moira council as a responsible authority and it too ultimately ended up at VCAT. VCAT overturned the decision of the council granting a permit, but the location of the facility importantly, in my view again, was in a semi-rural location in a farm zone seven kilometres from New Merke township and 30 minutes drive to Shepparton, which is just a drop in the bucket. In this case, at power 36 by decision members Laurie Hewitt and Anne Keddie, which they handed down 28th of July last year, they stated, and I quote...
Time, would you like extension?
Yes, yes, please.
Councillor's support extension, you can continue councillor O'Zavari.
Thank you. The extent to which the need for a use will influence the decision to grant a permit will vary depending on the circumstances of each case. For example, greater or lesser weight would be given to this factor depending on a proposal's location, the zoning of the land, the applicable fault policy framework, the character of the area and the pattern of surrounding land uses, and also the nature of the use itself. This facility was established in a farming zone. The last example is the Yarra Ranges council. In the Narcon program, they tried to move it from out of town to the Warburton township, which was within 200 metres of a school and in the close proximity of a chemist and bottle shop. In my view, critically, all these applicants went through a planning process with a responsible authority before they commenced their facilities. Councillor Hazelman's comment that they could have got around it had they have done a certain process, they're not the facts that we have at the moment. Those facts are that they've got three residences. In my opinion, given the resistance to drug and rehab facilities within a residential zone and given the high profile of Odyssey and EXO, I do not accept that the Cottage management commenced its operation on the reasonable belief they are exempt from a planning permit. Call me cynical, but for me, it doesn't pass the sniff test. The benefit of listening to a large number of submissions from people who are residents of the facility, also to a number of people in our community who are considered to be well-respected and supportive of the facility, I acknowledge that, but their support is not the issue. A majority don't have one common characteristic that a lot of objectors do have, and that is they don't live in the area, therefore no ownership of the neighbourhood. This neighbourhood means everything to its local residents. This council, as we as councillors, are charged with the responsibility of looking after our residents, listen to their concerns, act on them and not create the impression of lip service. For me, the issues of criminal activity, the plethora of people supporting it are not the main issue. The support is but a smokescreen for the main issue. I cannot, will not, support an illegal facility by making it legal despite its perceived good intention. Consider this scenario, every other resident who wishes to build or undertake some activity under the planning scheme requires a permit. What message does that send to others that we are prepared to change the rule? Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Zavari. Councillor Abdullah, could you take the chair please?
Due to my comments, I do have to leave the chair. Most of what I have to say has been said, however, I would like to read my response to this application. Firstly, had the correct process for this establishment of the Cottage occurred from the start, this whole situation would have been handled in a much better, a much more correct manner. Saying we were not aware of these requirements is simply not good enough in my eyes. When you take on this type of responsibility, you should know what you are doing. The impact of denying nearby residents and the community of any input of the location and model has led to community divide and also council divide. Last Tuesday, we heard from both the supporters and the objectors. Both groups of the community members deserve to be considered. All community members are equally important to me and to everyone, I'm sure, in the room. I can see the great work the Cottage does, so it's quite heartbreaking sitting here, looking at these people that are facing challenges. I heard from families whose lives have been changed by the support of the Cottage programme. However, I also heard how other lives have been affected and impacted upon from lack of knowledge and consideration. The facility is needed, we all agree with that, and the amazing people supporting this facility, I take my hat off to you. And I'm very emotional because I see the need. I just don't like the process of what has occurred here. It needs to be done in the right way with a proven, regulated model. So unfortunately, I don't support it.
Any closing comments, councillor Summer?
Yes, I do have many closing comments. I hope that it's not going to be superfluous and that I can do it justice. I'm just going to go through all the comments individually of what people have said. So we'll start with councillor Adam. He was quoting the Act. It's all about achieving the best outcomes for our local community and an overall quality of life. We're not talking about a handful of people who live on one street, we're talking about a much broader context here. There's going to be people touched by positivity, it's not all negative stuff. And it does have community support. We've got folders of letters from schools, from the kindergartens, from politicians and local leaders, we've got all that. It has the broader context support. And I think if we knew just how much support, we'd be rethinking what we're saying here tonight. It's not, it's not always the squeaky wheel. So, he also mentioned that councillor Ryan had moved a motion in order to get a report to council. Now, we didn't get that report. So if we didn't get that report, how are we going to actually help and find a new location?
You're addressing a question to me councillor?
No, it's a comment, it's just a comment. So moving on to councillor Sutton. Not having a facility near the CBD or supermarket or, or school? Now, they've all given us supportive letters and they have not objected to this, and it does not need to be supervised 24/7. I actually had something written about that, so I'll see if I can find it. So... Doesn't matter. Personally, I don't see the need for someone to remain there overnight because everybody there has strict entry criteria, they're all committed to improving their lives and there's a clear understanding of that. If there's any issues, they'll be removed from the programme. So I don't think it's necessary, but if that point would give people some comfort, so be it. And then we went down to councillor Jevanetti. Quality assurance standards, that's not actually required there. This is the thing. Everybody pictures an, like an acute ward where everybody's detoxing and freaking out. It's nothing like that, we saw it, it's peaceful. And if they weren't at the Cottage, they'd simply be at home. So what's the difference? And we've got councillor O'Zavari who was talking about whether it was accredited with government funding. Now, this is a not-for-profit agency and they don't receive government support, support because if they qualify for support, they'd need to adhere to a very restrictive model. It may not have the same successful outcomes. But they have been legitimised by the courts as, as having merit because they refer to them in their sentencing hearings as part of community rehab. He's mentioned also Odyssey House, Mollyoolah, and how it was overturned at VCAT. Even out in these semi-rural areas, we need to be brave enough to stand up and say, okay, we're going to actually offer the permit because there's always going to be objections.
Time, extension.
Okay.
There's always, always going to be objections, no matter where it goes. So it's very telling to me that VCAT overturned a council who wasn't brave enough to stand up for the vulnerable and say, well, we're going to go ahead. And it was also mentioned about schools, being close to schools and bottle shops. That's the point. These are the triggers of everyday life. If they were at home, they'd still have to walk past those things, at least they're in a safe space. And this idea of criminal activity, as much as I'm sure everybody believes that it's a big threat to most of people in this room, but it is unsubstantiated. Unless it went to a court and was absolutely proved, I would suggest that many of the people who are throwing around these accusations should probably rethink that lest they get in trouble for a little bit of slander. We've seen some bad behaviour actually and it hasn't been on the side of the residents. So that's what I have to say, and if it doesn't get through, I am so sorry, I am so sorry. So yeah, only need, it doesn't matter. One more vote.
Thank you councillor Summer. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Sorry, division, motion lost, I should say. A division please. All those in favour? Councillor Hazelman, councillor Summer, councillor Patterson and councillor Abdullah? All those against? Councillor Jevanetti, councillor, sorry councillor Sutton, councillor O'Zavari, councillor Adam and councillor O'Keeffe? Motion lost. Councillors, we now go to item 10.4 on page, sorry.
Madam Mayor, before you do, can I, can I pose the question, what direction, what advice are we providing our officers now as a result of that decision?
We'll just have to have discussion.
You, Madam Mayor, it might take...
I think we'd probably need to discuss that in our next briefing session.
It might take another notice of motion for another, another meeting. Is it correctly or wrong through you, Madam Mayor, there's a, there's an enforcement matter in play with certain dates that we've been informed of by the CEO?
Sorry, what was the question?
Councillor Hazelman asked, what direction, now that we've, the motion's been lost, what direction will the council take in relation to the matter?
So we'll have to...
I think the CEO knows exactly where I'm going to. We've had a application for a planning permit refused. The applicant now has the capacity to take that to VCAT, challenge it at VCAT. What advice, direction are we providing our staff?
What advice, direction are we providing our staff at VCAT?
I know where you're going.
Because at the moment, they're going there with nothing.
So it's not on the agenda, so we won't be commenting on that tonight, but obviously we need to have clarification at some point. Thank you, Councillor Hazelman. Councillors, we have item 10.4, Adoption of Amendments, C193 Part Two and Combined Planning Permit 2016, 269, Shepparton North Las Corp Proposal on page 86. Recommendation is on page 88 and 89. Would a councillor like to please move the recommendation? Do I have a councillor that wishes to move the recommendation?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation. Sorry, I was deep in thought doing something else, printed on page 88 and 89.
Thank you, Councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second to please?
I'll second the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor O'Savary. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think all councillors are well aware of the, the history of this over, over many a, a long time. Through the development of the commercial activity, commercial strategies, ultimately in a planning scheme amendment, a range of submissions, off to a panel hearing, all of the submissions to the panel indicated that the current retail and commercial offerings in the north were insufficient. Additional retail in the form of a second full-line supermarket was required. The contentious issue that the panel had to determine with was the location of that supermarket because almost at, at the, the same time, there was the Las Corp proposition application on behalf of Woolworths. Now, in the consideration, the planning panel did suggest some timelines to allow for a negotiated outcome, if you like, to be completed within 12 months from the date of release of the panel. And that was to look towards approve, any approved and approved proposed permits for the existing commercial one zone to explore whether the activity centre should expand towards being integrated with land to the north and to also prepare, and sorry, investigate the drainage basin, perform part of the broader open space and a range of other issues. But in particular, they set a timeframe around the existing supermarket site and their capacity to sign up a tenant for a second supermarket. That was introduced into the panel report stating that this commitment should be made in writing to council within six months from the date of release of that report. That, that aspect hasn't been met at this stage, and the above statement in the, in the panel report was followed by, if the commitment is unable to be made, the panel considers the Las Corp rezoning and permit application should be approved and permitted. And I think it's the, the Las Corp proposition that if it's not, if their proposal is not approved, there won't be a second supermarket developed in the very near future or even in the medium to longer term future in North Shepparton. I think if we look at the demographics, clearly all of the submitters indicated that a second supermarket based on the demographics was required in North Shepparton. And if we look at where the current supermarkets are located, there is one supermarket to the north of High Street in all of Shepparton. And if we look at the, where the population growth is occurring and where that will continue to occur in the future, there is no question that a second supermarket is required in the north of Shepparton. This motion, if successful, provides the opportunity for that to occur and also provides for future growth and development, the eventual development of a structural plan for North Shepparton.
Thank you, Councillor Hazelman. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, Councillor Hazelman has done an admirable job of summarising it.
Thank you.
For mine, I'm all for giving business and opportunity to get their skates on, but they haven't done it. There's demonstrated need for a second supermarket in the north of Shepparton. North Shepparton globally, but particularly North Shepparton, is growing at a frenetic rate. I could well speculate about the motivation for IGA to be sitting on their hands, but in relation to this, this has gone on too long. I'm very supportive of Shepparton growing and progress stops for no one. There's a demonstrated need. The permit says it's appropriate for our commercial strategy going forward, and I think it's, it's about time.
Thank you, Councillor O'Savary. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Sutton?
I'm not in favour of this amendment and believe, believe that it should be abandoned for the following reasons. Having read the panel report, I note that it is quite scathing in regard to a lack of a structure plan for this area and recommend, and recommended that before proceeding with the C192, 193 Part Two, this should be a priority. The panel acknowledged that Council Shepparton North Activity Centre strategy is relatively undeveloped and provided a unique, a unique opportunity to shape a new centre that better aligns with planning policy and more contemporary planning principles. Consolidating the supermarkets and shops into one location would encourage economic activity and business synergies, providing a focus for shopping, business and community for, community facilities to locate around and to improve walkability. This is where a structure plan is, a structure plan is critical. It also remains concerned that if Las Corp proceeds at this time, it could compromise the potential for an integrated activity centre and may result in a disengaged and fragmented centre. The panel are the experts in this field and they identify that if the Las Corp plan goes ahead, it will result in a disengaged and fragmented centre with very little synergy. In effect, it will be a centre with two retail nodes separated by a range of disparate uses. It was also noted that 18 Proprietary Limited had recently become the new, the new owner of the commercial zone land and it cannot be associated with inactivity of the previous owner. Council should work with them to further review their planning permits and to undertake a structure plan for this area. And the six months, I think councilors decided the six months, it wasn't actually in the panel report. And I just think that we need to give the new owners a bit longer to work out what they're going to do.
Okay, Councillor Sutton, would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any closing comments? Councillor Hazelman? Sorry, yes, it was Councillor Hazelman.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In, in respect of the structure plan, the, the recommendation does in fact refer to the structure plan, and where it differs from the panel is in the timing of when the structure plan is to be developed. It argues in the, in the body of the report that the structure plan would in fact take a significant amount of time to develop and in fact end up with possibly, or more than likely, exactly the same result we're, we're considering tonight. Yeah, look, there has been, over the years, a number of different permits that have been issued on, on one site and an action hasn't occurred. We did, over the last few weeks, have had very intensive briefings from all the parties concerned, being operators, developers and, and landowners. It was telling that Las Corp came to their promote, opportunity to promote their case in partnership with Woolworths, which gave some confidence that that development would actually occur. And I think the, the proposition is now that in, in a crude sense, that the market forces will determine the next development of inline supermarket in the north.
Thank you, Councillor Hazelman. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried.
Division, please. Division, please.
Division, okay. All those in favour? Councillor Hazelman, Councillor Jevanetti, Councillor O'Savary, Councillor Abdullah, Councillor Patterson, Councillor Adam. All those against? Councillor Summer and Councillor Sutton. Thank you.
May I just, it was remiss of me, under the cottage report, not to mention that there had been submissions since last Tuesday, right up until tonight's meeting, and I did indicate to one of the submitters that I would note that prior to the report being considered. It means nothing in relation to the actual consideration because the councillors all had those reports in front of them, but I did indicate that I would make that statement, and I didn't, so I do now.
Thank you very much for that, Mr Harriet. Councillors, we'll now go to page 113. Just to note that item 11, there's table motions nil received. Item 12, reports from council delegates to other bodies, nil received. Reports from special committees and advisory committees, nil received. Notice of motion amendment or rescission, nil received, and documents for signing and sealing, nil received. We'll now go to item 16.1, Councillor's Community Interaction and Briefing on page 114. The recommendation is on page 115. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Yes, Madam, uh, Mayor.
If you could please wait till the chair finishes, that would be good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay.
That the summary of council's committee, committee interaction and briefing programme be received.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Jevanetti, Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jevanetti? Any councillor wishing to speak against to the motion? Any closing comments? Councillor Adam, all in favour? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item 17.1 on page 116. The recommendation is on page 127. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move that motion as well. Madam Mayor, the recommendation on page 128?
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Savary, Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the recommendation?
It wasn't page 128. 127, sorry, Madam Mayor, yes.
Would you like to speak?
No, again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, Assembly of Councillors. It just shows who was where and when and, yes, and accountability of our attendances.
Thank you very much, Councillor O'Savary. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Any closing comments? Now go to the vote. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, now go to page 128. Item 18, urgent other business, not included on the agenda, we don't have anything. Confidential management reports. 19.1, designation of confidentiality of information report as attached. Would someone like to move that recommendation, please? Councillor Summer, do I have a second to please?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Adams on a bit of a roll in the corner there.
I am on a roll.
Okay, Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just commercial in confidence.
Thank you very much. No?
No comment.
No, anyone wish to speak against to the motion? Any closing comments? We'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Now, item 19.2, designation of confidentiality of information. We do have a recommendation there also on page 128. Would a councillor like to move that recommendation, please?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Mayor. On page 128, pursuant to section 89, 2D in the Local Government Act 1989, the council meeting be closed to members of the public for consideration of confidential item.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sutton, would you like to second that? Anyone wish to, sorry, I'm all confused. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, procedural, Madam, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll all go to the vote. All in favour? We now ask all people, please in the gowery, to leave the meeting room. We now have a confidential report. Thank you very much.